seizures and isolation from the global economy effectively constitute a form of economic war against Russia for its invasion of Ukraine. That's on the next On Point.
Tune in for On Point, weekday evenings at 7 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from our listener supporters and Good Samaritan Advanced Illness Care and Hospice, celebrating 30 years of providing care to southwest Virginia. Find out more at goodsam.care. And Davenport Energy, a family-owned company, providing propane, fuel oil, gasoline, and diesel fuel throughout southwest and southside Virginia since 1941. And our listener supporters.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
President Biden plays a big card. The U.S. is banning the import of Russian oil, but the president also has a warning for the American people.
Defending freedom is going to cost, it's going to cost us as well in the United States.
Also today, the story of Brittany Greiner, the American basketball star detained in Russia on what many say are trumped-up charges. She's not the only American facing time in a Russian prison.
It is significant, and I mean, if you are an American who is in Russia, you need to leave.
And in Argentina, animals across the country under threat from severe wildfires.
See, as in all those years, tenemos alguna quema.
This biologist says there are always fires, but this year, all the areas she works in are burning at the same time. I'm Marco Werman. Those stories and more today here on the world.
Reverend Gregory Reynolds, he is with the Shenandoah District of the Wesleyan Church. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, Reverend. Would you mind, could you give us a, tell us a little bit about your church and your congregation? And then when you're done, I'll ask everybody else to rise while you give us the invocation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to be here. I love the motto behind, underneath the county seal, "In God We Trust." And it seems like we're living in a day where we need somebody to trust, don't we? And it's a real honor for me to be here. And on behalf of the Wesleyan churches in the entire Roanoke Valley, some of those being in the county, I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for what you do. Some of our churches have worked with you folks over the years. I know that I planted our Wesleyan church over across from the high school, Cave Spring. So we had to bring plans in and all this kind of stuff, and you guys kind of drove us nuts for a while.
We're still friends.
That's right. It just, you know, it just helps our friendship grow, you know? But thank you so much for your service. And I appreciate the fact that you folks allow us to come and pray. And we do need the help of God, and so thank you so much.
Well, if everyone desires, please rise for the invocation, and then after the invocation, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of your Son Jesus today, and we acknowledge you, and we're so thankful for who you are. Lord, in a world that seems to be chaotic, in a world that is war-torn and tear-stained, we're thankful that we can lift our eyes into the hills from where our help comes from, knowing that our help comes from God Almighty, the Maker of heaven and earth. Thank you for these men and women, Lord, who lead our county. Father, I ask that you would grant them the insights and the understanding that they need as they sit in seats of leadership. But more than that, we ask that you would grant them wisdom in decisions and direction that they provide. Bless our chairman. Thank you for him, help him today. Lord, we do pray for our world this afternoon. We pray for the needs in Ukraine, people that are suffering, families that are being torn apart, people that are dying, people that are frightened, people that are fleeing. Oh God, we ask that you would be near to them. And while we pray for them, we thank you for your mercy to us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting for March 8, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7 o'clock p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month, and deviations from this schedule will be announced. Our meetings are broadcast on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 a.m. 5:00 p.m. Yeah, long day. The Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend our Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And finally, please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
We have next on our agenda any requests to add change or add or change the order of our agenda items? Anyone want to change order of agenda items? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, sir.
Mr. Lubek?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item C1, briefings. Briefings to discuss the Board of Supervisors, with the Board of Supervisors, the county administrators' proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 operating budget. Mr. Kaywood and where's Ms. Geerhart? There she is. You have the floor.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. It is my pleasure to present to you the proposed operating budget for FY '22-23 and kind of a brief overview of our agenda for this presentation. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the budget environment, which has been very challenging this year, some of the unfinished business in the General Assembly, and then some of the major operating or the themes of the budget. And then Ms. Geerhart's going to talk to you in a little bit more detail about our revenues and expenditures that are proposed, and then the next steps. Starting with the budget environment, obviously, it's been very challenging this year both to anticipate some of our revenues as well as some of our expenditures. The, you know, we're definitely in the recovery phase from the pandemic, at least at this point, which has been very positive and helped many of our revenue sources to recover. On the other hand, we have historically high inflation, and I am old enough to remember what this was like from the late '70s and early '80s, and we're in a timeframe like that again, which again makes predicting some of our future expenses difficult. And then probably equally significant, we have a lot of uncertainty with the state budget. And moving on to that point, two very important items to point out in the proposed budget, there's a big unknown on either side of the ledger sheet that are not included in the budget as it's currently crafted. The first is the unknown future and fate of the grocery tax legislation, specifically how and in what form that money might be refunded to localities, both between us and the schools. So for the proposed budget, we are not assuming any of the approximately $2.4 million that we receive annually in grocery tax. Obviously, that's probably very conservative, but we felt that's a better place to start and then add back what we know will be received rather than anticipate a, an unknown number. That's on the revenue side of the ledger sheet. On the expenditure side, as you all know, the comp board has made a variety of, or considered a variety of proposals to change sheriff salaries, which are currently anchored at $42,000 in the proposed budget. If the comp board comes in, the amount is essentially equivalent to this or higher, we will have to make adjustments to sheriff pay, which will also likely impact our other public safety agency pay scales. So we are also not addressing that in the budget at this time, again, just given the, A, the number of unknowns here, but then also particularly with employee pay, we think it'd be a very poor idea to put something out there then have to take it back because we were incorrect. So neither of those items are addressed at this point, but we, we know that they're both out there. Kind of considering some of the larger themes in the budget, I think one overarching theme that we've had this year is to try to both retain and recognize our employees that really make our organization run, and we'll get to that in more detail shortly. Also continuing our commitment to public safety, investing in our children's future, primarily through our school system, strengthening our investment in capital and technology, enhancing our quality of life, and finally continuing to support the many regional partnerships that make Roanoke a great place to live. With respect to our employees, we're proposing a 5% cost of living increase for all county employees to include public safety. And within the public safety ranks, that would mean moving the, the steps that they are in by 5%. So the scale would move in addition to each employee's pay moving by 5%. We're also going to continue the implementation of the public safety pay plan. We're in year two of that implementation, and create a Great Step system for our emergency communication employees. So it's a lot of work in public safety pay. We have also reserved some funding to begin to address some non-public safety pay compression issues, and this was primarily hits us at the lower end of the pay scales where, in some cases, recent hires are making as much, or even in some cases, more than existing employees that may have been around for a few years, and folks are bunched up, particularly at the bottom of the pay scales. We do have funding that's required to meet a rate increase from the Virginia Retirement System. And then finally, we're trying to minimize impacts of increasing cost of health insurance to employees to try to maximize the benefit they would receive by actually getting a raise. Second priority is continuing our commitment to public safety. One of the things we cut back on in COVID was vehicle replacements, so we're increasing funding for our fleet replacement. This especially hits the police department, and to some lesser extent, the fire department, where we've deferred vehicle purchases. We've also allowed for increased funding for vehicle repairs and fuel. I will point out that we did put this presentation together before, a week ago, so fuel costs have risen dramatically even in the last few days. So we're going to obviously have to keep an eye on this, but we, even before then, those costs were rising. And then again, vehicle repair costs, both with scarcity of parts and just labor cost at those providers, has certainly risen. We're making a little bit of a structural change in how we fund fire and rescue overtime. A good portion of our fire and rescue overtime is planned overtime, and we want to make more provision for that in the budget. And then there's another piece of that, there's what I would call more managed overtime, and we have somebody absent that we have to make up for an unexpected slot where we're paying overtime. And I like going forward to try to fully fund, and we don't get there in this first budget, but fully fund that planned overtime so that the part that you all see listed as overtime is actually the part that's manageable. So that's a change we're making for this year. The police, we provided funding for them to initiate a new program for mental health and well-being check-ins for the police department employees, and then the continued implementation of the Great Step system that we mentioned previously. With respect to investing in our children's future in our schools, we're proposing a $77.56 million transfer to our local school system based on our formula, that is, I believe, a $5.7 million increase over what we did in the last budget, along with the $7.67 million in transfer to school capital and a $1.8 million transfer in the CSA Act funding. And then probably most importantly, with respect to changes, we are proposing in the budget to move from a 12-12-12 capital program to a 17-17-17 joint county school capital project program. And then last but not least, we want to increase our funding to a CCAP program just to make more seats available for Roanoke County students. With respect to strengthening investment in our capital and technology, we are continuing to try to slowly increase our contribution for our capital maintenance. Probably the second bullet may be the most important one here that we haven't talked about already, which is increasing our contribution to our fleet and heavy equipment. Again, this got ratcheted back during COVID, and we don't want to get too far behind the eight ball, particularly with our purchases of our solid waste fleet and then our fire and rescue apparatus. We are seeing increasing costs and have proposed increasing funding for software as a service and the maintenance costs associated with those software products. And then again, it's obviously funding the capital program at a higher level. In the category of enhancing quality of life, we are proposing additional funding for transportation, both transportation and planning studies. And this is actually in the background, the rendering of the 419 project before it was built, so this is what it looked like when it was in the planning phases. And we believe that, that those combination of efforts, both in planning and transportation, have been very well received by the public, and we want to remain competitive in going after grant funding for both state and federal funds. We've also proposed to reintroduce the Gateway signage and landscaping program that has not been funded for a number of years. There is a gateway sign here at Tanglewood, but there's, I believe, six or seven throughout the county, and these are where you see the Welcome to Roanoke County signs. They, they previously had maintained landscaping that has not been formally managed in a number of years, so we would like to improve our gateway entrances into the county and improve that signage. We've also proposed a limited expansion of the recycling program, which would add at least one trailer and some part-time staff hours to better maintain the drop-off locations that we have today, because in all of our community meetings, this is one of the number one things we hear about that folks want, is just an increased level of service at those recycling centers. We have proposed additional funding to extend or expand the operations of the, our voting location at Brambleton, just so that that can run a little bit smoother, because again, that's been very popular and well-used. And then the proposed budget does fully fund the recently executed MOU with the town of Vinton with respect to E911 services and tipping fees. And then the last slide that I will speak to before I give, Ms. Geerhart to stage, continuing support for our regional programs. We are showing increasing funding for the RCACP, and this is both due to a little bit higher utilization rate from the county and then also some compensation adjustments that needed to be made there that have already been made. That was an organization that was suffering from very, very high staff turnover, so they've gotten that stabilized. We also are funding an increased per diem cost at the regional jail, number of factors affecting them, but inflation, they have fewer prisoners, and then they're anticipating some of the comp board requirements just with the across-the-board increase that is being applied at the state level outside of the issue with sheriff. We are starting to need to make on our side of the ledger sheet debt service principal payments for the regional jail. Previously, the localities have been making interest-only payments, so that has increased our debt service there. The tipping fee at the resource authority has gone up $1.50, so we have included funding to accommodate that increase. And then last but not least, we are required to make an increased contribution to Virginia's Blue Ridge just through our rising lodging tax receipts. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Geerhart to go into these items in a little bit more detail, and we'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kaywood. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I will now review with you our proposed fiscal year '22-23 operating revenues and expenditures. Our revenue projections have changed since we last discussed them with you at our work session held on February 8, with our largest change in our personal property tax revenue. We have noted before, this revenue is our most difficult to project, as our projections are 16 to 18 months in advance of collections. Since the February 8 work session, we have received additional information from the Commissioner of the Revenue, as well as new information from the National Auto Dealers Association. As you may recall, in the spring of 2020, we adjusted this revenue down significantly in anticipation of depressed economic conditions with the onset of the pandemic. However, market forces, including inflation, supply chain issues, and consumer demand, have actually increased vehicle values nationwide. Based on the additional information we have received, we do not anticipate a decline from our fiscal year '22 projected that we originally shared. We still anticipate '23 to be a slight reduction from the '22 actuals, however, we are anticipating more of a flat forecast versus a large drop-off in future revenues. Other minor changes since the February 8 revenue work session include increasing the real estate revenue budget by $250,000 based on the final assessments completed by the Real Estate Revenue Office for the calendar year 2021, which has increased the fiscal year '22 assessment to 6.96%. Projections also increased for Commonwealth revenue due to anticipated 5% increase in salaries for constitutional officers and their state-funded employees, with the exception of the Sheriff Department. We are still monitoring the pending legislation as related to the Sheriff Comp Board funding positions. Projections have also been updated to include a small increase in our HB 599 funding, which supports our police. Cigarette tax collections through two months are higher than originally projected, and we anticipate an increase for the upcoming year. And permits, fees, and licenses are trending higher and have been increased with proposed fee changes in development services fees. Current economic conditions, while still somewhat volatile due to inflation, is reflecting growth and recovery from the pandemic. Fiscal year '23 budgeted revenues are $218.5 million, which represents a 3.5% growth over current fiscal year '22 actual projected revenues of $211 million, which was shared at the February 8 work session. At that time, we projected the proposed fiscal year '23 revenues to be a little over $215 million, but again, with the additional information, the proposed fiscal year '23 revenues are now a little over $218.5 million. We have categorized our increase in general government expenditures based on the budget themes Mr. Kaywood discussed earlier. The next few slides will detail the expenditures in each category based on the summary shown The proposed budget includes $8,416,436 for retaining and recognizing employees. This includes a 5% cost of living increase for all county employees, including public safety and emergency communications, as well as funding for career paths, competency adjustments, and changes in base personnel. The county will also continue the implementation of the public safety step plans for year two, and includes funding for career paths and additional changes in the base personnel. With the county's VRS, Virginia Retirement System rate will increase in fiscal year '23 from 14.38% to 15.97%, and health and dental insurance rates increase slightly with the county absorbing most of the required costs to minimize the effect to employees. Funding has also been set aside to begin addressing non-public safety salary compression issues, as well as funding to provide additional part-time salary increases to various departments. We have worked with our benefits consultant to determine the need for any rate increase for our health insurance. At our February 22 work session, we shared with the board what our rates would be with a 5% increase. However, to help minimize the effect of rate increases on our employees, we are proposing a 3% rate increase, and the county will absorb the additional costs. Based on this change, an employee making $30,000 in the current year will receive a $1,500 raise based on 5%, and if they are in the family health insurance coverage on the wellness plan, they will have an increase of $198, so the employee would still net a salary increase of a little over $1,300 without considering taxes. An additional $384,321 has been included in the proposed budget for continuing our commitment to public safety. This includes additional funding to more appropriately fund fire and rescue overtime, and increased funding for vehicle repairs and fuel costs due to older vehicles and rising costs due to inflation. The proposed budget also includes $25,000 for mental health check-ins for police and $30,000 for crosswalk guards at various schools. $5.8 million has been included for investing in our children's future. This does include an increase of $5.7 more million to the transfer to Roanoke County Public Schools operating budget, which is based on our long-established revenue-sharing formula, and $75,000 to increase funding for the Community College Access Program through Virginia Western Community College, as well as $50,000 to provide funding for turf maintenance for school athletic fields used by Roanoke County Parks Recreation and Tourism. To strengthen our investment in capital and technology, this proposed budget includes an increase of $985,150. $300,000 is attributable to the transition from the 12-12-12 debt model for future county and schools debt issuances to a 17-17-17 debt model. And $165,200 is provided for increased software as a service cost and other technology maintenance costs, along with an additional $500,000 to purchase light fleet and equipment, especially for police, along with fire and rescue and general services and parks and rec. The proposed budget includes $830,234 for enhancing quality of life. Previous board action adopted a revised memorandum of understanding with the town of Vinton, which increased costs for the county to provide E911 services and solid waste tipping fees. Additional funding provides for transportation and planning studies, landscaping and gateway signage, and the expansion of the recycling program. Funding has been provided to extend the operations of elections at the Brambleton Center Satellite Office and for other election expenses, and funding is being provided to offset the rising costs of waste management, vehicle repairs, and fuel costs.
So, I'm sorry. So we have, for waste management, some fuel cost increases. And then back on Slide 19, we also have fuel costs under public safety, so I'm assuming that's for police, fire, and rescue. We're looking at fuel cost increases in two different areas.
Yes. We're spreading that across the departments to help with their budgets.
So we're going to have probably substantial increases in both of those categories as we go forward.
Unfortunately, more than likely, what we've put in the current proposal probably is not enough based on the rising cost of fuel that we are currently seeing today. As Mr. Kaywood referenced earlier, this was done before we're seeing the current prices. However, we will continue to monitor that as we move forward.
Chairman, a question. We haven't even gotten the budget from the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority yet.
We have not, but we have been made aware that there will be a $1.50 increase in their tipping fee. So based on our tonnage, and we have received some projections from them, so based on that, we feel like $70,000 will be enough to cover the increase in the tipping fee.
A short synopsis of why the increase, short summary of why there's the increase in the tipping fee?
Yeah, well, they haven't, we really haven't gotten into that, but it is due to their rising costs, you know, increasing their salaries and compensation as well. They're seeing inflation in the items that they purchase to provide services. They have also done, right much, changes, as you very well know, as far as their infrastructure. So we feel like the $1.50 is pretty reasonable, all things considered.
Was that not paid for through all the debt issuance?
Yes, but there's still operating cost ongoing that's related to maintaining the road.
They're also going to exp- They're also going to experience increased fuel since they're trucking everything now.
From their contracts.
With their contractor, and they're probably going to have to pass that along at some point.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman. If it's appropriate. I was, I was going to ask about the expansion of the recycling program. As I saw on another slide, that it's one trailer and an additional part-time employee?
Part-time and overall, but not exactly sure. I do believe we're planning to share a work session with the board in the future on the recycling program, and some information will be provided.
So we can wait on that. I was just gonna, I was wondering if it was enough that we can talk about it then. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. Get back up to investing in our children's future. That slide. You said that the community college, excuse me for not writing down my notes, did you say that amount is an increase?
Yes, sir.
How much?
We currently pay $150,000 to Virginia Western for the CCAP program, and we are proposing to increase that by $75,000 to reach $250,000.
Okay, great, all right. And then the turf maintenance, that's for us to help maintain the schools?
We are currently working on a memorandum of understanding between the county and the schools. Currently, we have only helped with, we have an agreement with the Vogel Field, which is at Cave Spring Middle School, and we, both the county and the schools each put in $25,000 in it to help build up funds for things that might need to be fixed or possible replacement in the future. However, they have added two additional new turf fields. One is at Glenver, and one is at William Bird High. So we are working on a new memorandum of understanding to include those as well and work on a joint funding to maintain those fields.
So I'd like to add a comment that it certainly would be nice if citizens could enjoy those turf fields that they lock up under lock and key, because I, I mean, I run, and I'm always around Cave Spring Middle School, and, you know, I know we want the parks and rec and the schools to use it, but there's times when ordinary citizens can walk in there and do exercise. So, Mr. K. Wood, I don't know what we need to do there, but, you know, I've been asking for that for quite a while.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to the schools and explore that more and report back when we do one of our upcoming work sessions and give some feedback on that.
Are you looking for after-hours, after-school hours?
Yeah, 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 after-hours, definitely, yeah. When, when I used to live in Ohio, all the big schools with turf fields allowed citizens to come in after 5:00, 6:00.
Walk on their tracks.
Yeah, walk on the track, go in the middle. Roanoke College used to do it for a while.
I, I remember, I've been there too.
So they're really gracious to the community, so.
I think the danger is vandalism.
I'm not going to vandalize it.
I know, you're not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I have two points of clarification. So on the CCAP, currently we're paying $150,000?
Mm-hmm.
And then you said this would take us to $250,000?
$225,000.
It's $225,000, I apologize.
Okay, you said $250,000. I was wondering if we had, something was wrong here. The second question goes back to what Mr. Radford was just asking. Why are we paying for school fields if, if it's for school usage?
Our parks, recreation, and tourism do use those fields for the youth programs that they offer.
Yeah, we have soccer matches on those.
So, so the county does actually use those fields as well as the schools.
I just wanted clarification. All right, thank you.
Football, rec football use.
Yeah.
And soccer.
Any additional questions?
Just for a comment on the CCAP, it's my understanding, and I think the chairman also understands, we'll now be meeting our full requirement.
Yes.
This will be the first time in a while that we've met the, we'll be right there where we need to be instead of below it.
Yes.
Of course, that probably will change next year.
Well, to piggyback on what Mr. North just asked, I know that I spoke to some folks from Virginia Western, and in my time on the board, I don't know that we've ever received a report, at least that I've seen, that told us we were not meeting our obligation. So do we, do we know, or does, I was told by one of the folks from Virginia Western that it was sent to Roanoke County. I don't know if it went to the administrator or to the finance department or wherever, but we, I think we need to know that we're not meeting those obligations because, and ultimately, it's hurting our, our kids that we're, we were wanting to advance. And so I think we need to know yearly where we stand with that.
I personally have not seen an actual report, however, there was an email exchange with staff at Virginia Western Community College outlining the need and the shortfall, which I have seen, and hence where the $75,000.
Well, I'm just saying over the past several years, because the gentleman that I spoke to said we hadn't met it for years.
Right.
And I said, well, that's never been brought to my attention. I know it came, it came back to us several years ago where we increased it from $125,000 to $150,000, but I don't think even at that time, we were given a number of how many we were not meeting. So.
With that information was shared, Mr. Peters, with the chairman and I had a meeting, I think in November, with the committee from Virginia Western.
And I apologize, I thought all the board members had the same information that was distributed to us.
But what, you're correct. I mean, I knew, we knew about it this past November. What I'm saying is previous to this year.
Correct.
But we, I don't think that any of us had received, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I had not seen anything previous to this year that we were not meeting that obligation. When we met with that committee, they said we hadn't been meeting it for several years. And, you know, I just, I want to make sure we're made aware of that because it's something I don't want to fall by the wayside.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a follow-up question, I would like to see, and maybe it's available and I just haven't seen it, I'd like to see a follow-up of those students being successful, the percentage of students successful that continue to go on, and how that it's helping those students. And I'm just very curious about those statistics and make sure that our funding is to good use.
Anything else?
Keep going. We'll have more questions. I have a bet up here that we're going to finish by four, so I don't want to lose my bet.
I have a set question.
Who knows what Lubek's going to do with redistricting? I mean, my goodness.
So continuing support for regional programs is being provided in, in the amount of $905,201. Again, the per diem cost at the Western Virginia Regional Jail is increasing, and an increase in debt service for the regional jail is needed. The required contribution to visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is increasing due to the proposed increase in hotel motel tax revenue, and we are experiencing a rise in our costs for the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection based on an increase in usage and employee compensation and benefit costs. And as we spoke earlier, the tipping fees are increasing by $1.50 for the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority. So with the additional requirement investments in our budget themes, the proposed operating budget increases by $17.4 million for a total fiscal year 22-23 proposed operating budget of $218,480,725. Please keep in mind, we will need to revisit our proposed increase in budget as we monitor the final resolution of the General Assembly legislation related to the grocery sales tax revenue and compensation board changes related to sheriff salaries. As we prepare for the future, we will continue the final phase of public safety compensation plans and to continue to develop long-range financial forecasts with multi-year budgeting. The county will continue its conservative debt management program and recommend changes to our capital improvement plan for the additional bonding allowed under the revised 17-17-17 debt model. And we will continue to analyze and develop our 10-year plans for capital improvement, vehicle replacement, and capital maintenance. And we will provide for reserves for unappropriated balance expenditure contingency and other fund balances to meet our financial comprehensive policy. And our next steps in the fiscal year 23 budget process include public hearings on March 22nd for the effective tax rate and the maximum tax rate. Also, on that date, the board will adopt the maximum tax rate, and we will have the first of two budget work sessions on the proposed fiscal year 23 operating budget. And on April 12th, we will have public hearings on the tax rate adoption and the first of two public hearings on the operating capital budgets. The board will also adopt the 22 tax rates, and we will have the second budget work session on the proposed budget. On April 26th, we will have the second public hearing on the operating and capital budgets and have the first reading of operating capital budget ordinances. And on May 10th, we will have the second reading of ordinances, and the board will approve the operating and capital budgets for revenue and expenditures for the county and the schools. Do we have any additional questions?
Not a question so much, but more of a comment. I'm optimistic that our friends in Richmond will complete their work by, was it March 12th, the CMA DA?
Saturday.
But assume they do not, I just want to suggest that if they drag out their discussions over the budget, and since those discussions have significant impacts on comp board and VRS and school funding, the timeline for Roanoke County adopting its budget might have to slide a little bit. And I know in the past that has occurred, so just be prepared. I, I hope that they were making progress, but we don't know, and there's always a chance that that final decision from Richmond may well be delayed, which in turn affects us and what we do. So, yes, very optimistic that we can wrap this up by May 10, but just in case, it may not happen.
Don't be in a hurry.
That's right. Thank you. Next item on our budget is new business. We have a resolution requesting adjustment of the CoreTran program minimum age requirement from age 70 to age 65. Thank you. Good to see you again.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I come before you today to offer a resolution to reduce the minimum age for the CoreTran program that is currently at the age of 70 to reduce to the age of 65. As you are more than aware that the CoreTran program has been servicing our Roanoke County citizens since 1985 with needed transportation for medical transportation, to appointments, for grocery shopping, and other essential trips. Currently, those trips may go through Roan, through, throughout Roanoke County, Roanoke City, the city of Salem, or the Town of Benton. Currently, we ask the requirements for the program be that the individual be a Roanoke County resident, be age 70 or better, and/or have a disability. While traditionally, the program has been funded through Roanoke County funds, over the last two fiscal years, staff has been able to apply for grant funding through the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. FY 2022, we were able to receive $119,000, $119,800 to offset the cost of the program for the urban portion of the county only. Staff has applied for additional funding through FY 2023 through Department of Rail and Public Transportation and are hopeful that within the next 45 days, we will know the outcome of that application. Shortly after submitting that application, DRPT reached out to county staff to make them aware or to inquire if we would consider reducing the age for the program to 65 from 70. In making this potential change, then this would also allow Roanoke County to be potentially available to receive additional funding for the urban and rural parts of the county. Currently, we do not receive any funding in the rural area. Keeping in mind that some of you are more than aware that it was September 2019 when we made our last program changes, when we were asking the minimum age to be 60, and it was increased to 70. Since that timeframe of September 2019 to current, we've had 53 individuals who have applied for the program and been approved due to disability, not age. They were in that 65 to 69 age time, or time, or frame that we're referencing to change to. Also, it's important to mention that no applications have ever been denied due to age. 82% of our applications that are approved are all due to disability of an individual. While it is unknown how many individuals will actually apply for the CoreTran program should this age adjustment be made, historically, the data lends to the fact that it will be a minimal impact to the budget as well as the ridership due to the majority of the applications being approved due to a disability. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed resolution as reducing the age from 70 to 65 for the CoreTran program.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you, you're doing a great job. I've heard from several of the riders with CoreTran, and they've been very, very pleased since we made our change to our, our own CoreTran a couple of years ago, and they've been very, very pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, the good work.
Thank you.
Let me echo the comments from the supervisor from Benton. The comments I've heard from citizens, very positive. So you are doing a great job. You and your folks are doing a great job, so thanks, it's great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Please do.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
With the anticipated reduction, the age to 65, has, has any thought been given to what that's going to do to the ridership? And if so, do we still have enough capacity with the current vehicles we have?
Yes, in conversations with our current vehicle partner, VIA, that currently we are averaging about 41 dot, 41 rides per day, and looking at the, the data of 53 individuals over almost a three-year time period, estimating that, you know, if we add 10 or 15 rides per day, that the current fleet could still sustain that, that increase.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to quickly echo that we really appreciate your work on this, and you're obviously doing an outstanding job, so thank you for your work. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose a positive motion for this resolution requesting adjustment of the CoreTran program minimum age requirement from age 70 to age 65.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
And my district is getting a lot of positive comments too, and that's a yes.
That's wonderful to hear.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Next item on our agenda, item E1, First Reading of Ordinances. An ordinance accepting and appropriating $5,157,837.51 in additional grants for Roanoke Public Schools. And Susan Peterson, Director of Finance from Roanoke County Schools, is here to tell us all about it. Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the support, sorry, I'm too used to going to my school board. Distinguished members of the supervisors, distinguished supervisors, I am blowing it today, sorry. I think it's because I'm not used to being up here without a mask, it's been so long.
You've been just going to too many meetings, that's all.
There is that too. I bring to you a request for an ordinance and an appropriation to increase the school board budget for state and federal grants awarded to the school division from the Virginia Department of Education in the amount of $5,157,837.51. We receive $248,000 of state school security grants to replace aging surveillance cameras at Burlington and Green Valley Elementary Schools, and to install additional surveillance cameras at Cave Spring and Glenver Middle Schools. We received an FCC Emergency Connectivity Fund grant for $164,948.85 to extend the data service that we, that goes with hotspots that we purchased at the beginning of the pandemic. This will extend them one more year through fiscal year 23. The remaining funds are, are going to be from the Easter 2 and Easter 3 allocations that were set aside by the state. The first amount from Easter 2 is $12,000 for instructional materials to support the social and emotional needs of our students. From Easter 3, there is just under $2.7 million for HVAC projects at seven elementary schools and four middle schools. There is $32,927.55 for supplies and tutoring to support our homeless students. There's just over $1 million for 11 remediation teachers for one additional year, and two math specialists for two additional years, who will be able to help remediate our students with the learning loss needs. $365,000, $365,374.82 hits will be received for before and after-school tutoring by our teachers, again, to help with the learning loss. $591,385.44 will be in support of our summer programs through fiscal year, the summer of 2024. And $33,458.4 will help a few of our special ed students for their post-secondary supports. I thank you for the opportunity to bring you this information and can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Question, just in terms of how some of the dollars are spread out over several years. When those funds are appropriated by the county to the schools with respect to that, they just, I'm looking at all the finance people, that just automatically carries over, right? Do they have to be re-appropriated in each subsequent year?
They will be. They will be part of my request for the carryover balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
And so we updated our policy, and so that will be one of the things we'll just break back to part of the year and report.
Because as Ms. Peterson was indicating, some of these go out for several years.
They do.
You want to make sure you have those commitments because you're going to be hiring people and want to make sure you have that commitment to those staff people, that they know that they're going to be funding for each of those years going forward.
Certainly.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item E1.
Second.
And also schedule a second reading for March 22nd, 2022.
We have motion and a second. Ms. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noor?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item E2, an ordinance reapportioning the representation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia by altering the boundaries of the election districts, establishing voting precincts therefore, incorporating a map showing the boundaries of said districts and precincts, designating new polling places for certain precincts, and providing for an effective date of this ordinance. Mr. Lubek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I would again like to recognize the members of the redistricting committee who are all here, Ms. Clayder, our registrar, Ms. Dooley from Information Technology, and Mr. Thompson, who is sitting in the bag, our Director of Planning and Development Services. But first, we'd like to highlight where we are in the process today. At the board's last meeting on February 22nd of 2022, we had a work session where the committee presented preliminary recommendations with regards to redistricting and received some very helpful feedback from the members of the board, both during and after that work session. And we truly appreciate the feedback that you have shared. And today, we're here for the first reading of the ordinance, and we certainly welcome, as we go through today's presentation, additional ideas, additional feedback, and certainly by moving forward with today's first reading, changes still can be made prior to the board's adoption, following a second reading and a public hearing on this matter. Would also like to recognize just the nature of what we're doing. We know that voting is essential to the democratic process, and it's how we as citizens participate in democracy. And we all develop a sense of belonging and pride in the communities and districts in which we live and serve. We know that changes to magisterial districts, precincts, and polling places are not always convenient or desired, and it can be difficult to make these changes. However, it is required that we go through this redistricting process. It is an important part of the democratic process. And I would like to highlight a few of the principles, as we did in the work session, for the benefit of our citizens that may be with us today. Some of the legal considerations as to why we redistrict, what is required in this process, we'll highlight the committee's recommendations as they have been refined to this point in time, and then discuss the next steps. Now, the first issue to address is when should we redistrict? And obviously, this year, we are late. Article 7, Section 5 of the Constitution of Virginia requires that any locality that conducts elections by district, as we do, requires that we change our district boundaries every 10 years in the year ending in 1. We are already in the year ending in 2. We have missed that requirement, and that is because we are waiting on two things. The first thing that we were waiting on was the census data. And due to the COVID pandemic, there was a delay in receiving the census data until late fall of 2021. The second piece of information that the committee was waiting on before it could get to its work was the new state and congressional lines, which were confirmed by the order of the Supreme Court of Virginia on December 28th of 2021. So once we received those two pieces of information, we were able to get to work. And this year, there's unfortunately a very condensed timeline. We would typically welcome more of a public comment period. This year, we're under a tight timeline where the state has asked that we have our recommendations as finalized as possible by March so that our registrar can begin her ballot work for June congressional primaries. The next question is, what should this be based on? It's, redistricting is based on population. There's a requirement in the Code of Virginia that it's based on the census. And the census, as you'll see as we go through information today, we receive population based on census blocks. There's blocks that, again, will be depicted that show the population within those blocks, and that is upon what we base potential changes to districts. And potential changes to precincts, however, are not based on population, but upon registered voters, and we'll discuss that in more detail in just a moment. And I'd like to briefly, before turning the presentation over to Ms. Dooley, again, highlight the six guiding legal principles that should govern the changes that we make, particularly to districts. The first is the principle of contiguity. This is the principle that all areas within a district should be physically adjacent. The second principle is compactness. This is the principle that the constituents within a district should live as near to one another as practicable. The third principle is population equality, and this may be perhaps the most important. This is one person, one vote is the principle. Each person's vote must count equally, and no person's vote should be worth more than another's. Each district must have equal population based on the 2020 census, with no more than plus or minus a 5% deviation between the districts. And as you will see from the data, we fall outside of that deviation so that there are changes required to our magisterial districts this year. The fourth principle involves communities of interest. We must take into account rural, suburban, and urban interests, as well as income and neighborhood characteristics. The fifth principle is that districts should have clearly definable boundaries, streets, rivers, or other permanent features. Another clearly definable boundary is a census block, and one of our recommendations will pertain to alignment of census blocks with magisterial district boundaries. The sixth and final guiding principle to consider for today is that racial and language minorities should be identified. This information was contained within the census, and we will refer to it in our presentation today, and that the outcome of the changes cannot abridge a citizen's right to vote on the basis of race or color or membership in a language minority group, and cannot result in retrogression of the position of members of a racial or ethnic group with respect to their effective exercise of the electoral franchise. And we will share our information with regards to how such ethnic and language minorities are affected by proposed changes. A couple other principles to touch on before we share the committee's recommendations is first, again, just a definitional, redistricting, again, refers to changes in district boundaries. Reprecincting refers to changes in precinct boundaries. And the committee is charged with avoiding split precincts. And what this means is that every precinct should be entirely encompassed within a single district, and this includes congressional districts, House of Delegates districts, the Senate of Virginia, and of course, our local magisterial district. So localities are required to establish precincts that are not split. And if we're unable to do so, excuse me, we must apply for a waiver from the state in part of elections. And with that introduction, I'll turn the time over to Ms. Dooley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. As part of the preliminary process, the redistricting committee took into consideration the changes that were made to our state legislative boundaries. The changes that were made in the state boundaries were extensive, and it prompted us to propose a restructuring of the polling precincts. The previous congressional districts on this slide are on the left, and the 2020 congressional districts are on the right. The Virginia House of Delegates boundaries had the largest impact on the committee's recommendations. The previous Virginia House boundaries are on the left of this slide, and the 2020 Virginia House boundaries are on the right. This slide shows the state senate boundaries. The previous state senate boundaries are on the left, and the 2020 state senate boundaries are on the right. As part of the board's policy to guide the redistricting process, it was noted that racial or language minorities should be identified for purposes of complying with the Voting Rights Act. This slide shows the breakdown of the non-white population for the existing magisterial districts. Hollins currently has the highest density of non-white population at 15.8% of the 2020 population using the current magisterial district boundaries. Hollins has the highest population at 20,344, and Benton has the lowest at 18,138. On the right are the calculations that allowed us to determine the percent deviation for each district. Benton is currently 6.43% below the mean, and Hollins is 4.94% above the mean, which makes the average percent deviation 3.18%. Our first recommendation is to align the magisterial districts with 2020 census blocks. This will allow for future census data to align to our current districts more seamlessly and hopefully prevent unnecessary revisions to the district boundaries in the future. Our second recommendation is to equalize population between Hollins and Benton districts as Benton is 6.4% below the mean, which is outside the guidelines which were set forth by the board. Our third recommendation is to restructure the polling precincts to accommodate the voter population and the new legislative boundaries set forth by the state. The areas notated by the red arrows will show the misalignment of the current magisterial districts with the 2020 census blocks. The dark black lines are the census block boundaries, and the edge of the different colors are the existing magisterial districts. So on the left is Catawba-Windsor Hills, and the right, just an example of the discrepancy between Cave Spring and Benton magisterial districts. This slide shows another example of the magisterial districts not aligning with the 2020 census blocks between the Catawba and Hollins districts. That's I-81 and 581. At the work session, it was noted that two dwellings would be impacted by the aligning of the census blocks, aligning of the magisterial district to the census blocks. But after we reviewed those, we determined that it would make more sense for those dwellings to remain in Windsor Hills. So due to that, we decided to follow the existing boundary at that location and to not affect those, it will not affect those two dwellings. So this was, this is a revision from the work session a couple of weeks ago. The committee's second recommendation is to equalize the population between Hollins and Benton districts. The area circled in red on the slides denotes the area that the committee is proposing to revise. Looking at a more detailed view of this area between Hollins and Benton, the committee is proposing to move the area shaded in pink north of Route 460 from the Hollins District to the Benton District. In this slide, each census block is labeled with a total population that resides within that block. Total population for the area shaded in pink north of Route 460 is 1,142. Fifty-four of those are considered non-white by the 2020 census, and so 4.7 of that population is considered non-white. On this slide, the left graph shows the non-white population percentage for the existing magisterial districts. The right graph shows the non-white population percentage for the proposed magisterial districts. Benton's non-white population percentage changed or decreased from 8.2% to 8%. And Hollins' non-white population percentage changed or increased from 15.8% to 16.4. The graph on the left shows the proposed plan's total population per magisterial district. Catawba will have the highest total population at 19,971, and Hollins will have the lowest at 19,202. On the right are the calculations that allowed us to determine the percent deviation for each district. Under the proposed plan, Benton will be 0.55% below the mean, and Hollins will be 0.95% below the mean. The average percent deviation decreased from 3.18% to 1.21%. This is the same information. It just shows the total population for each district, comparing the population between the existing districts and the proposed districts. The hatched bars in the graph illustrate the existing district's total population, and the solid bars illustrate the proposed district's total population. This is another view of the proposed magisterial district boundaries and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit A. The committee's third recommendation is to restructure the polling precincts in accordance with Virginia's legislative boundaries and the voter population. This slide shows the restructured precincts within the Catawba District with the legislative boundaries overlaid and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit B. And these are the same as it was two weeks ago during the work session. This slide shows the restructured precincts within the Cave Spring District with the legislative boundaries overlaid and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit C. And there were a couple of changes that we had made in the east, in east and west Cave Spring precincts that we had discussed with Supervisor Mahoney. This slide shows the restructured precincts within the Hollins District with legislative boundaries overlaid and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit D. This slide shows the restructured precincts in the Benton District with the legislative boundaries overlaid and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit E. This slide shows the restructured precincts within Windsor Hills District with legislative boundaries overlaid and is referenced in the draft ordinance as Exhibit F.
This is different from?
This?
It changed, right?
Yes. So we looked at the area that is, we changed it to Bat Creek.
Okay.
And we moved the line back to the area that it was previously, so that Benton Mountain essentially is staying the same.
Okay.
So that won't affect any voters in Benton Mountain.
Okay.
There are two areas off of Route 11 in the Catawba District that the committee was not able to accommodate with the restructuring of precincts. In the two areas outlined by the U.S. House Congressional Boundary and the State Senate Boundary, there are not sufficient voters in these areas to constitute separate precincts. So for this reason, the county would need to apply for a waiver from the state.
Thank you very much, Kelly. And we'll just close up with the next steps for the board. We propose that the board today approve the first reading and to schedule the second reading in a public hearing for March 22nd, 2022. And we would also anticipate that on that date, we would present to the board a resolution to administer the precinct that was just highlighted by Ms. Dooley. And before that time, we certainly welcome any additional ideas, comments, and feedback that you might have regarding potential changes. And we also anticipate having a website made available to the public where they can look up on our JIS system and be able to click and explore and also submit comments by email. Additionally, the next steps after the board approves the ordinance is that the county attorney's office would submit the ordinance that is approved by the Board of Supervisors to the Office of the Attorney General for a certificate of no objection. And once approved or has been obtained from the Office of the Attorney General, then Ms. Clayder would have to submit notices of the changes to all registered voters, and that would be, of course, a major ordeal. ordeal for her, requiring a lot of work, and the clerk to the board would also certify copies to the local electoral board, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, the State Board of Elections, and the Division of Legislative Services. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us today.
Any questions?
Mr. Lubek, I got a question. So you send this in to the Attorney General's office. When is it effective?
And so it would be either effective upon their issuance of a certificate of no objection, or if they fail to act, it is deemed effective within 60 days.
So say you send it in March 23. It's possible it's effective June, May 23?
That is correct. We are hoping that they would act more quickly than that, but yes, that is possible.
Mr. Peters?
Well, first of all, again, I want to thank the committee for your work. The second question I have is, I know we talked about changing the voting precincts. Is that included in this, or is that just something we do on our own?
Yeah, I did go over that. That was the last. The Exhibit B through F shows the restructured polling precincts. And we took into consideration the comment that you had at the work session about Mount Pleasant, and we moved that back to where it was.
I'm sorry. I guess what I was asking, we're changing the location for voting?
Oh.
They're in the ordinance. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just the comments I made earlier before the meeting today.
Absolutely. Mr. North had kindly made a recommendation with regards to exploring yet another change to the boundary. We'd be happy to take a look at that and share that with the board before the second reading.
Ms. Clayder, if all of this goes forward as suggested today, how many notices are you going to have to send out to all the voters? I could see it's almost all the registered voters.
Well, every registered voter would receive one. It'll be more than 73,000 people.
Wow.
It'll be a great time.
Wish you luck. Will the registrar need an appropriation for mailing?
You'll all just be surprised by that at the end of the year.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve first reading and to schedule a second reading and public hearing for March 22?
May I ask a clarification?
I'm sorry.
So if we know that there's going to be some suggested changes, we're still approving as is?
I believe so, and I defer to Mr. Lubek, but my belief would be if there are changes, they would not be deemed to be so substantive as to require us to go back and start all over again. We're allowed to make minor changes between first and second reading.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, how minor is minor? That's another question.
Motion to approve E2?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, committee. A lot of hard work, but thank you. Item F, second reading of ordinances. Item F1, an ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $34,000 from the Roanoke Valley Guns and Hoses Hockey LLC and appropriating these funds to Roanoke County's Fee Class Fund to be used for constructing a playground at Explorer Park. Mr. Blunt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There have been new changes since first reading. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance. I would like to thank Roanoke Valley Guns and Hoses Hockey Incorporated for their very generous donation. This will really assist with developing an inclusive and destination playground at Explorer Park. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Mr. Blunt? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item F2, an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $500 from an anonymous donor, County Roanoke Fire and Rescue Department Chief Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Since the first reading, there have been no changes, so we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Any questions for the chief? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Item F3, Chiefs is still up. Ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $107.71 from Mr. Mike Ray, who is Cave Spring Representative on the school board, to Roanoke County Fire and Rescue Department Chief Griffin?
Thank you again. No changes since first reading, so we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Have a second? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, chief. Item G, appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk? Item H, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted one resolution in the form or forms listed below, and if any discussion is required, that item can be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I would welcome a motion to adopt the consent agenda resolution.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Supervisor from Windsor Hills. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item I, citizens' comments and communications. I have none. Madam Clerk, do you have any?
No, sir, I do not.
And I don't see any citizens who want to say anything.